Thank you for joining us for this joint committee with the committees on public safety and intergovernmental and military affairs and our good friends from the committee on labor and technology on this Friday, March 31st in room 225. We're on a 301 agenda and this hearing is being streamed live on YouTube. If we have any kind of technical disturbance, we will post a notice as to when we will reconvene this committee. And we have two items on this agenda, Senate concurrent resolution 179 and Senate Resolution 123. And on our testifiers list, we have Michael Order who has submitted written testimony in support. We have no other testifiers on this measure. By chance, is anyone in the audience? Angela, of course. Welcome to the party.
Party, yay. Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of Kapalama NSW. Unfortunately, this is not going to be a party mood conversation, so sorry to, you know, bring down the vibe. Okay, so you know, for this resolution, we're testifying in strong support. Kapalama NSW is a public safety initiative of the HPD. We work with various HPD districts, Wahiki District 6, and also District 8, and with various NSWs and citizens patrols from across the state to create safer communities.
Angela, you know, we're talking about artificial intelligence.
Oh, artificial, oh, okay.
They were on 179 and 123. Okay, we'll look forward to your testimony in just a little while. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on these two artificial intelligence resolutions? If not, members, there's no one to question. And yeah, you want to proceed on the two chairs have conferred via AI. And we read each other's minds and would like to pass these two resolutions, these very two very unique resolutions, which were in fact drafted by AI. And yeah, it's kind of scary. They're not going to lead us anywhere, Sharon. And would like to pass these two measures out as they are. For PSM, we are going to defer any decision making till the end of our three-pronged agenda today.
No, we defer.
Well, I want to pass it. Pass it as is. Yep. You go with that?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know who's taking votes for PS or LVT. Well, I'm going to defer. I can't vote. I don't have a call.
Okay. So for the Labor and Technology Committee, Chair goes with the recommendation and voting Aye.
Voting on SCR 179 and SR 123, recognition to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote Aye. Senator Ihaar?
Aye.
Senator Keith Agarant and Favella, excuse. Chair recommendations adopted.
Thank you.
Thanks. We are joining this joint committee. Aloha. We are convening the 100, excuse me, 301 agenda for the Committee on Public Safety and Intergovernmental and Military Affairs for a number of resolutions on this agenda. The first is Senate Concurrent Resolution 35. And on our testifiers list, our testifiers list.
Where's those testifiers?
There is no, we have no submitted testimony for this resolution, so we're going to move on to SCR 43 and 37. And on this particular measure, we have a number of pieces of testimony written, but no one's submitted to be in person or being online. IT, by chance, anybody online for SCR 43 or 37?
Take a look at the, or sorry, you just looked at the testifiers list, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, just by chance, if anyone joined us online?
Not for those measures.
Great. And is there anyone wishing to testify on Senate Concurrent Resolution 43 or 37 that might be with us in the room? Angela? Wow, okay. Sorry. Okay, 43 and 37, Pearl Harbor, start.
Not 35?
Oh, we went to 35. Do I talk about 35? Okay, go ahead. We're gonna wait for she needs for a comment anyway.
Okay, yeah. So submitted Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES. So we're just going to testify in strong support. And the US EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, announced over $68 million in water infrastructure funding for Hawaii through the bipartisan infrastructure law. And so this, we can see is a, something that the federal and our state governments are collaborating about, and therefore we should support it. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Angela. Again, anybody interested in testifying on Senate, excuse, yeah, Senate Concurrent Resolution 35, or moving on to 43, or SR 37? Okay, we're going to move on to the next set of resolutions, Senate Concurrent Resolution 90 and Senate Resolution 82. And we have Tommy Johnson from the Department of Public Safety.
I'll stand on my reading comments and private questions.
Thank you. Cap Reed?
Aloha. Thank you so much for hearing this resolution. We know ID is so important for people who are released from prison. You know, in 2016, the department got $25,000 to do it. And it didn't happen until actually '21, '22, when the Deputy Director for Corrections actually worked on an MOU with the Department of Transportation. And we really appreciated that because it got the process going. And this just last session, $100,000 was allocated to the department so that they could get machines in the different facilities because they don't produce the ID. Department of Transportation does. But it's really important for people to have ID when they're released for, you know, getting jobs, housing, medical care, benefits. So we really, really support this, and we hope you do too. Thank you.
Thank you, Cap. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on SCR 90 or SR 82? We're going to move on to the next set of resolutions, SCR 91, SR 84. On our testifiers list, we have Tim Lyons from the Subcontractors Association, indicating he might be here, but is not. He submitted testimony in support. Stephanie Sakamoto might be joining us via Zoom.
Present on Zoom, Chair.
Okay. How about Greg Thielen? Is he joining us via Zoom from BI?
He's not present either, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Members, we also have Julie Yonker from Hawaii Gas. All the testimony submitted is in support.
Julie, Chair, Greg Thielen just arrived in the meeting.
Oh, okay, great.
Someone start his video.
Greg?
Sorry, I'm late. Have you guys already started the hearing?
Yep, we're on your resolution, Senate Concurrent Resolution 91 and SR 84.
Okay. Oh, thank you very much. It's fortuitous timing. I'm logged in as Stephanie Sakamoto, so I'm surprised it shows up as Greg Thielen, but that's probably for the best. I am here to speak in support of the resolution. I am a builder and a developer of affordable housing, and I'm also the volunteer chair of the BI Hawaii Codes Committee. Building codes have become a major issue for affordable housing, and we are hoping that this task force can sort of bring the process back down to earth and make it more reasonable in terms of preserving housing affordability. And I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Greg. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on these two resolutions, 91 and SR 84? Members, any questions? Thanks for joining us, Greg. We're going to move on to the next set of resolutions, SCR 101, SR 111. On our testifiers list, we have James Barrows from Haima has submitted testimony in support. And that's all I have. Is Mr. Barrows?
Mr. David Lopez.
Oh, Mr. Lopez.
Yes, sir. I'm David Lopez. I'm the Executive Officer for Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. And thank you for having us, Chair, co-chair. We provided support on this, and we stand by that support. And we will stand by online if there's any questions about our written testimony. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you for joining us, Mr. Lopez. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on these two resolutions? Yes, Angela?
Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of Kapalama NSW. And we are in strong support. So the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, HAIMA, plans for both and responds to both natural and human caused emergencies. And these include emergencies resulting from weather to incidents involving hazardous materials or nuclear power. And the agency prepares and implements a statewide comprehensive emergency management plan and routinely conducts extensive exercises to test state and county emergency response capabilities. HAIMA is the coordinating agency on emergencies for all kinds between, is the coordinating agency on emergencies of all kinds from the federal and local agencies, including the four county emergency management agencies, Hawaii County Civil Defense, Maui Emergency Management Agency, City and County of Honolulu's Department of Emergency Management, and Kauai's Emergency Management Agency, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. After an incident, HAIMA conducts damage assessment surveys and advises on whether to declare an emergency and seek federal relief funds. The agency maintains a primary emergency operations center in Diamond Head Crater, Honolulu. HAIMA also operates a state emergency communications centered staff 24 hours, seven days a week. And it broadcasts statewide communications, or it doesn't broadcast, it maintains statewide communications and county emergence with county emergency officials and other partners and agencies. So, and the resolution is to request HAIMA to establish a two-year task force to address key findings validated in the resiliency assessment report. And this is very necessary to protect the state of Hawaii. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Angela. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on SCR 101 and SR 111? If not, we're going to move on to the next set, which are SCR 30, SR 24. And for our testifiers list, we have, we have no testimony on these two measures. So we're going to move on to the next set of resolutions, which are SCR 44 and SR 39. And these are so popular that we've got no testifiers on these two measures. Okay, we're going to go on to the last. You want 44, you want to testify on 44 and 39? Okay, come on down.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and the committee. Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of Kapalama NSW. So I'm going to read the federal version of our HAIMA here, documents about responding during emergencies and communicating, communicating during emergencies. So during an incident, communication with community becomes especially critical. Emergency communications may include alerts and directives about evacuation, curfews, and other protective actions, and information about response, which response status for family members, or if there's any assistance and other matters that impact response and recovery. So well conceived and effectively delivered emergency messages can help ensure public safety, protect property, facilitate response efforts, elicit cooperation, instill public confidence, and help find families reunite. The extent to which people respond to a emergency broadcast is influenced by many factors, including individual characteristics and perceptions, whether the message comes from a credible source, how the message is delivered, and what the message is itself. And there are many communication tools to choose from, including in-person events, print and broadcast media, internet, and social media. Each has advantages and limitations depending on the objective and the intended audience. So, you know, specifically for this resolution, it's for the American saying language, to be broadcasted and to disseminate information during emergency response situations. And for there to be effective communication, including if there has to be graphic presentations, then it then so has to be in situations of emergencies. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to testify on Senate Concurrent Resolution 44 or SR 39? Members, we're going to move on to the last two resolutions, Senate Concurrent Resolution 220 and SR 158, courtesy of our friends from Maui. And on our testifiers list, we have Tumpap, Tiffany Wing, Ke Kai, Ke Ahi, all individuals in support of these two measures. Is there anyone else in the room or online wanting to testify on 220?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This is Snake Patel, President of Lahaina Tump, Action Committee. I'd like to testify on SR 158.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So thank you, Chair. Thank you, members of the committee. You know, our organization has been involved in Front Street for over 30 years in Lahaina. It's a historic district. There is a certain ambiance over the years that visitors and the community alike have enjoyed that has now been disturbed. And it's related to these stores along Front Street that have come in and, you know, been able to pay a lot of these high rents in this organization. And actually, it's moved out other mom and pop businesses because they're willing to pay such high rents. Of course, we can't control any of that, but we can't control are the ordinances that are already in place. And what we're asking is that there be stiffer fines for these predatory businesses. They're ripping people off, they're ruining the sort of just overall vibe of Front Street. And if you walk down the street, you know, you can't stop without being interacted by them. There's already rules in place where you're not allowed to hawk, you're not allowed to have a visible or vocal sign shouting out to people. They're grabbing people by their hand, pulling them into their store. They're actually applying these lotion and face creams right on the street, which is illegal in itself. So I don't know where we go. We work, we try to work with organizations, try to work with enforcing this through the planning department in Maui. The fines, they'll just pay them because they make so much money. They don't care. So the fines have to be heavy enough that not only are those businesses going to take notice, but the landlords. And maybe that could be something that could be implemented as well, because these landlords have to realize, sure, they have the right to rent their place out, but when it goes against the safety of the community and, you know, I don't know, we're just at a wit's end with it. I'm not going to talk too much about their business practices because we actually have somebody here who just got ripped off yesterday. And they've been working with our organization as well as the consumer affairs.
Can you summarize for us?
Yeah. So, and thank you so much, Chair, for the additional time. So we're strongly in support of this bill. We're strongly in support of raising the fines associated with these infractions and once and for all trying to get peace back onto the streets of Lahaina. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for joining us. And Mike, would you like to share your commentary?
Yes, I'm the gentleman and my wife, my wife and I were visiting Maui the first time this year. This is our 40th wedding anniversary. And we were, and we were having, we had lunch downtown. We were planning on going on a dinner sunset cruise at 5:30 last night. And between the time we were walking the streets, and we walked in front of this store, 709A, which is known as La Belle AME. It's a cosmetic company. They're handing out samples. They're very friendly. They're standing out by the door, talking to everybody. They convinced my wife to try the cream. They applied it at the door, and then they said, let's come in and let's see what the results are. So after a few minutes, they let it sit and they show us. And it does, does, does impact her eyelid or the bottom of her eye. So we liked it. And we kept going. And she sold us the product for $400. And then, then they put it on the left, and then, you know, we thought we were done. But then she said, oh, we have this complimentary spa, free spa for today. Just have to, you know, wait for the technician to come in, and he'll take you in the back and apply the spa. And if the spa was a face cream and a neck cream to improve the appearance. And so she escorted us in the back, a gentleman shows up, and applies it on one side, and then waits for the results and videos it. And, yeah, and they have a machine that's part of this red, it's a red LED, supposed to be a magical thing to make the cosmetics soak into the skin. But all this time, and then at the end, they want us to buy this thing. And we ended up paying or being charged $8,000, $8,600 for this, this product at the end with a machine. And because the results did look good. I mean, it was convincing. But after I got home and I found the, I went on the.
Could you summarize for us?
Huh?
Could you summarize, please?
Yeah. Well, at the end of the night, we realized that it was an operation that wasn't right. They're not ethical. They bring you in, you sign the receipts. The receipts do say no refund, cancellation, exchange only within 14 days. And, and I called my credit card company to see what I could do on my side. They said the funds had not been transferred. So we, the credit card company can't dispute it. But they said if I could get the store to cancel it, then they won't, the funds won't be transferred. So I went down there today about 3 o'clock. And I called city police, and I told them I was going to go in and record this transaction to see what the store owner was going to say to me. And the police showed up and they said they wanted to go on first. And that's probably the wrong thing to do because the manager was very upset. He was, you know, calling me names or, you know, just making snide remarks, belittling me that I called in the police. But at the end of the time, the police talked to the manager. I was asked to stay outside, and the police were interacting with the manager. At the end of the time, they, the manager convinced them. There was an 800 number on their receipt. There's an email.
Mike, we're going to have to move on, but we understand the situation.
Okay. So I hope this doesn't happen to a lot more people in Lahaina. I like it here. I just, this is the first day we were here, and I really got disappointed. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry for the terrible experience, but thank you for your time. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in person or online on these two resolutions, SCR 220 and 115? Yes, Angela?
Aloha, kaiaka, Chair, Vice Chair, and the committee. Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES. We just wanted to comment after hearing the stories that it just sounds like it's some sort of, you know, scam. Maybe that's more of the appropriate word instead of predatory. And for these things, we just comment, we just want to comment that raising awareness about these sorts of scams is probably a good idea, so that kapunas won't have to fall into those sorts of frauds and scams. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Angela. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on these last two resolutions? If not, members, any questions? Okay, we're going to break briefly prior to taking the vote. Thank you for your patience. We're reconvening the Committee on Public Safety and Intergovernmental and Military Affairs for a 301 agenda with a number of resolutions on this agenda, the first being Senate Concurrent Resolution 35. And this is requesting the County of Hawaii Department of Water Supply to convene a working group to help underserved communities. I'd like to recommend that we pass SCR 35 as is. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SCR 35 as is. Chair votes Aye, Vice Chair votes Aye, Senator Fukunaga?
Aye.
Senator McKelvey?
Yes.
Senator Awah?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. On the next pair of resolutions, Senate Concurrent Resolution 43 as well as Senate Resolution 37, this is going to help improve the Pearl Harbor historic path there. And I'd like to move this measure out as is. Yes, Senator?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and strong support. This area now goes to your district and the new Senate District of Repartement. What I know, Senator Fukunaga and I worked very hard with revitalization of this. So thank you for your leadership on this very important issue.
I gladly adopt this trip.
It's your trip. We kept what you wished for.
So now, I'll give you that. Any discussion on the recommendation to pass these two measures out as they are? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes.
Okay, we're taking both of them. Okay. So recommendations to pass as is, SCR 43 and SR 37 of the members present from PSM. Any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay. The next pair of resolutions are Senate Concurrent Resolution 90 and SR 82. This is asking the Department of Public Safety to submit a report to us detailing the progress on getting IDs for inmates on their way out of incarceration. So I'd like to pass these two measures out with technical non-substantive amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes.
Chair, recommendations to pass with amendments, SCR 90 and SR 82 of the members present. Any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
The next pair are Senate Concurrent Resolution 91 and SR 84. This is to convene a task force on the, you know, processes and procedures, the state building code. All the testimony for both were in support. So I'd like to pass these measure out, these measures out with technical non-substantive amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes.
With amendments on SCR 91 and SR 84 of the members present, any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations adopted.
On the next pair of resolutions, they are SCR 101 and SR 111. This is for HAIMA to really look at how we can fortify our harbors and look at another harbor outside of Honolulu Harbor in case of catastrophic incidences and make sure that we have some kind of redundancy for shipping of goods into the state. So I'd like to pass this measure out with technical non-substantive amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes.
Chair, recommendations to pass SCR 101 and SR 111 with amendments of the members present. Any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations are adopted.
Okay. On the next two measures, SCR 30 and SR Okay, on the next two measures, SCR 30 and SR 24. Like to help our friend out on the Big Island with this issue of nail service to rural areas. I'd like to pass this measure out with non-substantive technical amendments. Members, any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments SCR 30 and SR 24 of the members present. Any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations are adopted.
Thank you. On the next pair, Senate Concurrent Resolution 44 and SR 39. This is to, in times of crisis, when there are emergency broadcasts that we have it done with sign language interpretation. I'd like to pass this, these two resolutions out with technical non-substantive amendments. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendations to pass SCR 44 and SR 39 with amendments of the members present. Any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations are adopted.
Thank you. And on the last pair of resolutions, SCR 220 and SCR 158. This resolution addresses a very ugly situation of people trying to make people beautiful in Maui, and would like to pass this, these two measures out as they are. Any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, I vote yes.
Okay, Chair's recommendations to pass as is SCR 220 and SR 158 of the members present. Any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations are adopted.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Thank you for everyone's patience. We are now convening the Joint Committee on Public Safety and Intergovernmental and Military Affairs, and our good friends from the Committee on Government Operations. It's 3 o'clock surprisingly on this Friday, March 31st, in Room 225. We have two resolutions on this agenda, the first being Senate Concurrent Resolution 158. On our testifiers list, we have Tommy Johnson. Am I right? 158? Yes. Okay, in opposition. We have Michael Vincent in support, Gerald Silva opposed, and Tagakutaki. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Concurrent Resolution 158? Yes, Angela? No, how to improve security in the Capitol.
Okay. So Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of Kapalama NSW, and we are in strong support of this resolution. So, you know, the safety of our communities is a statewide concern. That hasn't been declared, but I think it should be. And if you haven't counted heroin needles outside of a store left behind by drug addicts, gangsters, and homeless, you wouldn't know why we need this resolution. If you haven't seen three fires in a few months from the same homeless encampment, you wouldn't know why we need this. If you haven't walked through downtown and talked to the stores and asked about reoccurring theft burglaries that plague this district, you know why we need this. And so this resolution is specifically for the activities that happen here at the state Capitol. And it is impacted by downtown and the things that happen there. And we're going to provide comments because as Kapalama NSW, we are involved in Waikiki HPD District 6, Nanakuli District 8. We collaborate with our kapunas. And there's a Nanakuli Citizens Patrol called the Citizens Patrol for the Department of Hawaiian Home Sets, Kanahili. And we've collaborated with those antis. They've had 17 years of experience in leading safety initiatives. And this is something that groups have to collaborate on. So we're going to provide comments because from, you know, our safety coordinator experience, the task force should consist of the direct, it should consist of the director of the Department of Emergency Management from the city, the Department of Public Safety, the lieutenant from the state sheriffs, the chief of the Honolulu Police Department, and also COR, because these are departments that are involved in public safety. So, you know, when the sheriffs respond, when they're dispatched. Yes, I will conclude. You know, when the sheriffs respond, why do you, why would we need the medical sector, right? Why COR? Why case management? Because when the sheriffs respond, they get a little booklet that they have to look through to see what kind of homeless concern they're addressing. And they have to interpret data that's not meant for law enforcement to interpret. It's meant for someone from the healthcare sector to interpret, to know what the root cause of the violation is. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Angela. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Concurrent Resolution 158?
Tommy Johnson, the Director of Public Safety. We didn't submit testimony on Senate Concurrent Resolution 158. We deferred to DLE for that. I did submit testimony in opposition to SR 141.
One shock music.
Oh, yes, sorry. It's a processing error on our part. Okay. Again, anybody else wishing to testify on SCR 158? If not, members, anybody want to question Angela? Oh, no, no, no. You can sit tight. We're going to move on to our next measure, that is Senate Resolution 141. And on our testifiers list for this measure is Tommy Johnson from Public Safety.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Tommy Johnson, Director of Public Safety. I will simply just summarize my testimony. I did speak to Senator Rebel about this yesterday afternoon. We oppose this measure because it would restrict ATI, Hawaii Correctional Industries' ability to provide goods and services, which means we would employ less inmates and have less employees work there. So I did provide him with an amended version that would lift restrictions and allow us to contract for services with other state departments. And I asked him to consider putting in a bill next year that will require the state departments to use ATI first before they go to private vendors.
Thank you, Tommy. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on SCR 141? Nope. Okay, we're going to break briefly prior to taking the vote. We are reconvening our Joint Committee on Public Safety and Intergovernmental and Military Affairs, and our friends from the Committee on Government Operations on this 3 o'clock agenda on Friday, March 31st. The two chairs have conferred on both of these resolutions and have decided that they're not quite ready for prime time, and we would like to defer action on both those measures. And wait, we just want to okay, so GVO members, if you could vote on a joint that we had earlier on.
Okay, yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we heard a resolution on artificial intelligence. Our friends from LDT already passed this out. The recommendation was to pass this measure out as it is. So SCR 179, SR 123, this asks Congress to kind of just consider the benefits as well as the dutchments of artificial intelligence.
Okay.
Okay, so the recommendation for these two resolutions is to pass them as they are. Members, any discussion? No, but we crazy. No, I do.
We need your vote.
Yeah, we need your vote.
Okay.
Okay, so any discussion? If not, Senator Elefante, yes, on these two measures.
Chair's recommendations to pass as is SCR 179 and SR 123 of the five members present from PSM. Any no votes or votes with reservations? Hearing none, Mr. Chair, recommendations are adopted.
Great, thank you. Enjoy your weekend. We're adjourned.